I would like to verify your presence, trustee, trustee Ohan Chanara.
Hi, Mr. Chair, I'm here.
Thank you. Call to order, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular. Check. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue, and please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. Item one point one, land acknowledgement, the opening prayer, the Our Father, and the National Anthem. And our staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
It's our honour and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Director Klein, could you please lead us with the opening prayer, the Our Father, and the National Anthem?
Thank you, through you, Chair, we'll begin with a prayer set for today, which is the feast day of Saint Teresa Avila. And Saint Teresa was a doctor of church, declared a doctor of the church in nineteen seventy, prolific writer, and someone that many Catholics pay a particular devotion to and have for generations. Saint Teresa, again, was a wonderful writer, there's many prayers that are connected to her, but I'm going to pray this one called. If you join me, the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Lord, grant that I may always allow myself to be guided by you, always follow your plans, and perfectly accomplish your holy will. Grant that in all things great and small, today and all the days of my life, I may do whatever you require of me. Help me respond to the slightest prompting of your grace, so that I may be your trustworthy instrument for your honour. May your will be done in time and in eternity, by me, in me, and through me. And if you join me in the Lord's prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Director Klein. Item one point two, motions arising from in-camera, there was one motion arising from the in-camera session that will require a vote in the public session, I will now read the motion. The motion is up on the screen, resolve that the internal audit plan for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four be implemented as described. May I have a mover for this item? Vice Chair Agnew, looking for a seconder?
Second, second.
Trustee Kelly, I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
Abstain, I wasn't there, thank you.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Trustee Murphy?
I'll have to abstain, I wasn't there.
Trustee Sanders? Abstain. Trustee Philbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire, absent, trustee Boa, is absent. Trustee. Okay, we got everybody, and trustee Duarte is in favor, we have six in favor, two extension, none opposed, motion carries. We shall move on to, our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Item number two, do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, and do trustees want any items removed from the consent agenda? Trustee Carabella, you have a hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take out six point one, point two, point four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other amendments to the agenda? Saying none, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, looking for a mover, trustee Sanders? Looking for a seconder, please? Seconded by Vice Chair Agnew, I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee Philbert?
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. The agenda is approved. Shall now move on to item number three, declarations of conflict of interest, are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Saying none, we shall move on to our next order of business, which is presentations. Item four point one, senior staff update, EQAO. Director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Chair, through you, Chair, we join other schools and district school boards across this province who for well, more than twenty years have eagerly awaited results from EQAO. And although EQAO has evolved and changed over the years, from an earlier time when it took days and days to do, and there was boxes and crates of paper, to the way it is assessed now, there is some threads that go through it, and it is an important, as they say, snapshot in time of student achievement relative to the Ontario curriculum, so that's important to know, it's important to know what it is and what it isn't. Superintendent Skripak is here this evening to give us a sense of what, how our board, how our students have fared, and to give us a sense of what we're doing as a board with this data, to move us forward and closer to our goals of student achievement. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Skripak.
Thank you, Director Klein. Just loading up my notes here. So these, this data comes to us from EQAO that was written last year by our students that take place on different times of the year, so OSSLT, the Ontario Secondary School Literacy Test, which students are required to write in order to achieve, to get their Ontario Secondary School diploma, have two writing windows, one in November, and I believe one in March, April, where students can write. Typically, we measure our results there by first time, students who wrote, first time successful. Then we have our numeracy assessments for grade nine, so in grade ten, they write their OSSLT, our grade nine students write their numeracy assessment, that takes place in January and June, and as of last year, those take place during exam time, to help our students out, give them as much time as they need to get ready for writing that. Something of note this year, I'll kind of mention, it's already in my notes later on, so I won't say it. Then our elementary students write EQAO in May and June of, at the end of the year, depending on when schools find it best, the best timing for their students to write. Typically, they write it over a three-day window, as Director Klein mentioned, they've adapted it, where it used to be a much longer assessment, now it's written over about two to three days, depending on the timing and what staff feel is best appropriate for the kids. So in grade three, one thing I would want to also make, make mention of in the data, you'll probably notice a big gap in twenty twenty till twenty twenty-one, I try not to mention this five-letter abbreviation, lest it come back to us, but students didn't write in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and more relevant also in mathematics, is there is a new curriculum introduced in twenty twenty, so any data that you're looking at before twenty twenty really isn't as relative to, relevant to the conversation, as opposed to the data that you're looking after twenty twenty. So starting in twenty twenty-two, that was the first time that our students would have written EQAO relative to the new curriculum that was introduced in twenty twenty. An interesting new point is this will be the first year that we actually have cohort data that you'll be able to look at next year, sorry, so kids writing this year will have written the assessment previously when they were in grade three. So as of right now, we don't have cohort data to compare our results from when they were in grade three to how they did in grade six and nine, this year will be the first time we've actually have students who are doing that. And another thing to note, that as of twenty twenty, the assessments in elementary changed in grade nine, so they became digital. So in the past, students would have used pencil and paper and submitted their answers, and they would have sent out those packages to staff across Ontario, teachers would be marking and assessing these over the summer. Now this takes place with a computer, kids digitally complete these, which does pose some interesting challenges when it comes to ensuring that students try their best. So, without further delay, we have our grade three data. We continue to surpass the provincial standard, and the provincial, sorry, the provincial average in all areas, that includes mathematics, so we were at seventy-one percent, level three and above, all the data that you're going to see here is students meeting the standard, which is level three or above. So we have seventy-one percent of our grade three students writing at a level three, sixty-one percent were in the province. And in grade three reading, we had seventy-nine percent of our students reading at a grade three, at level three and above, or assessed at level three and above based on their answers, and seventy-one percent in the province. This year, I believe it was last year that the new curriculum was introduced, so this data reflects the new curriculum that was introduced in language as well, to keep that in mind. So we are now introducing and rolling out a brand-new curriculum in our elementary grades, so this is the first time we're getting a snapshot of how students did with the new curriculum. And then in writing, in grade three, we achieved at a seventy-four percent, level three and above, relative to the province, sixty-four percent. Moving on to mathematics in grade six, we achieved a fifty-eight percent, which was an increase over last year, where the province stayed static at fifty percent, level three and above. In grade six reading, eighty-seven percent of our students, and grade six also had the revised curriculum last year, eighty-seven percent of the students achieved level three and above in reading, versus eighty-two percent at the provincial level, and in writing, eighty-five percent of our students in Halton achieved a level three or above, versus eighty percent in the province. Moving into grade nine mathematics, we've seen a slow but steady increase over the years, so the brand-new curriculum was written also in twenty twenty for grade nine mathematics, we're now at a sixty-five percent of our grade nine, and these are all the grade nine students who are taking one W or a grade nine class, so all students would typically write this, and sixty-five percent of our students achieved a level three or above, and keep in mind again, grade, in twenty twenty, we also launched the new destreamed curriculum for grade nine mathematics, so any data previous to this doesn't exist, because prior to this, you would have had applied level data and academic level data, so we don't have, you wouldn't be able to compare the two years. And first-time eligible OSSLT results, so again, this is what's required of students so that they can achieve, achieve their OSSLT, eighty-nine percent of our students, first-time writers, achieved a level, achieved a pass. So there is no levelling here, it's just a pass or a fail. So things to keep in mind this year, OSSLT will once again be written, so we're talking in fall, November to December, so probably in a few weeks, some students may be getting ready, or maybe actually writing, and then in the spring, they'll have another opportunity, March till April. Grade nine mathematics, as again, as we did last year, will do over again, January and June during exam writing time, students will have an opportunity to write their EQAO. And then grade three and six writing period begins on May the seventh and ends June eleventh. Some things to keep note of this year, we were already in this practice in this board, but if you had those questions arrive to you, will this count? Yes, as of this year, the province has actually mandated that the math assessment in grade nine is included in their grade, so at least ten percent up to a maximum of thirty percent, the current practice in our board, in Halton Catholic is up as ten percent. So students writing in January of this year and June of next year, well, actually, June of twenty twenty-five and January, will have ten percent of their mark determined based on how they did on EQAO, and that's based out of a provincial mandate now, or before that was a board decision. We also have the financial literacy assessment for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. That will be happening next year, it doesn't happen this year, but as of next year, there's another assessment students will need to take in order to get their OSSLD, they have to do the OSSLT, which is that literacy assessment, but now they'll have a financial literacy assessment also that they'll need to take in order to graduate, that will count towards their graduation rate, my understanding, and we haven't been given as many details as we're hoping for at this point, but we'll get them, I'm sure. And that'll be that they need to get seventy percent or higher, and the assessment will take place in their grade ten math course. That's the snapshot of EQAO for Halton Catholic.
Thank you, Superintendent Skripak, trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Skripak? Please put your hand up. Director Klein, did I see you turn the mic on? Wanted to add something?
No, sorry, just itchy finger.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Skripak, just wondering, is there, do you have targeted, like, on a per-school basis, or I know with the resources you have, you can provide more resources to a specific school, is that, is that a goal? Yes.
Superintendent Skripak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry, through you, Chair, yes, typically what we do is work with schools, and they create their student achievement plans, and based on their student achievement plans, they will get different levels of assistance, you'll hear my math plan, that we have some schools that we prioritize for this year. Beyond that, schools also have access to a team of consultants from Student Achievement that come and help them analyze their data, you also hear in the math plan that we'll be working with principals to take a look and analyze their EQAO results of this year. In terms of targeting and understanding student learning need, they, some of the work we'll be doing this year is looking at grade two and five results from the previous year to take a look at student grades and understanding which students we may need to prioritize in, in terms of supporting and knowing who's there.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy, follow? Thank you. Next up, Vice Chair Agnew?
Um, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, so just a couple of questions, one question I have is, do we have the information on how many students in our system are exempt from writing that, for, if they are students with special exceptionalities, do we have that information available?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I can get the exact data, but I would, I'm positing that it's around one percent, or less than one percent of the students are exempted.
Thank you.
Um, and just another question, with respect to the financial literacy piece, which I think is fantastic, currently for students who are not successful for whatever reason, writing the OSSLT, they do have the opportunity to take the literacy course, will the same thing be offered for those students with respect to the financial literacy, do you know?
Superintendent Skripak?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is the information I'm hoping we get soon, they've, they've literally, we, the information that we have came to us in May, that this is a new requirement, and no updates have been provided to us, it's my sincere hope that students will be supported that way, but can't comment on government policy.
Thank you, vice chair, clarification, anything? Thank you. See no other hands up here, trustee Carabella, I thought I saw a hand up, but it's okay. So no, no further questions, Superintendent Skripak, thank you so much for the wonderful work being done with you and your staff, and we hope to see the scores go up next year and the years to come, thank you so much.
More to come, thank you.
With that, we will move on to our next order of business is delegations, there was one delegation which was declined for this meeting, but trustees have been informed about this three weeks back, and have been, the information has been provided to trustees, and with that, we shall now move on to next order of business is the consent agenda, item number six, the following items have been agreed upon at the consent, at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda, action item six point one, six point one point two, accept, item six point one point two point four, and six point one point three, which are policy action reports. So we shall have no discussion on these items, we shall have a vote on the action items, and, and that's about it, so I shall, I will now read the motion, resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda items six point one point one, six point one point two, point one, six point one point two point two, six point one point two point three, six point one point two point five, and six point one point three point one, point two, and point three, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, as submitted, may I have a mover for this item? Looking for a mover, trustee Sanders moves, looking for a seconder?
Second.
Trustee Murphy, I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee Philbert?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. The consent agenda is approved, we shall now move on to we skip over approval of the minutes, skip over business arising from previous meetings, we skip over, we are in action items, action item number nine point four, this is the item which was removed from the consent agenda, may I have this item on screen, please? Amendment to HDSB bylaw, article four point one, point two. This item has come to the board from policy, and we need a mover only, so I'll ask Chair of Policy, trustee Ohan Chanara, to please present this motion.
Thank you, be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that the amendments to HDSB procedural bylaw, article four point one, point two, be approved.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara, this has come from policy, so we do not need a seconder, we need only a mover. Trustee Carabella, you asked for the second to be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, may I have the floor?
Ah, yes, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, so I wanted to make an amendment. Yes, I did send that around and explain, so.
Thank you.
The amendment, so I would need a seconder.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, trustee Carabella, the trustees, the amendment has been sent earlier, it's in red on the screen, moved by trustee Carabella, looking for a seconder? Trustee Sanders, seconds? This is amendment to item nine point four. Trustee Carabella, motion is, your amendment is in order, I'm placing it on the floor, you have five minutes to speak to this item.
Thank you, so I have made this amendment to, to put the amendment of the one board meeting a month to start in January twenty twenty-five, and to be clear, this does not amend the bylaw, but sets a timeframe for when it would come into effect, so I'm proposing we wait until January twenty twenty-five, as this is a very natural start date, it's the beginning of the year, for such a big change of schedule for our board meetings at Halton Catholic. Board meetings have been twice a month, as long as I remember, for trustee for ten years, and prior to that. So this start date, which is really just two months away, provides ample notice to our stakeholders and the public we serve, and to senior staff to adjust to the schedule of once a month meetings. So, and then going forward in January, I anticipate a smooth running of board meetings, and if this amendment does not pass, or have the majority of the trustees, then the bylaw takes effect immediately, so the way it's phrased is for, for it to work like that. So I do hope I can have that support of the January twenty twenty-five start date, and also this opens up discussion about it, because we had been talking about that at the policy meeting, and we weren't quite sure, so I'm bringing this forward, we can have a discussion, and either start with January the first, as I'm proposing, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I will now open up question times, question time, play minutes, trustees, do you have questions for, at this point in time regarding this amendment? Thank you, I will now open up debate time, if trustees would like to debate this item. Trustee Murphy?
Not a debate, just a comment that, that I'll be supporting this amendment, I think it just allows us to keep the Keeping Christ in Christmas meeting, without having to move too many things around, and it creates a fresh start, so I'll be voting in favor, thank you.
Thank you, any other trustees? Saying none, I shall call the vote on the amendment that you see in front of us, so trustees, this amendment is, the items in red, the words in red, moved by trustee Carabella, seconded by trustee Sanders, trustee Carabella, you get to close, sorry, you have three minutes to close.
Thank you, I'm, I think we can just go to the vote, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I shall call the vote on the amendment, see on the screen, trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Trustee Murphy?
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee Philbert?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Thank you, we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, the amendment carried, we shall now vote on the main motion as amended. The main motion came from policy, so it was moved by, we do not need a mover for that item, so can I, can I have the motion on screen again? Thank you, we have the motion on screen, trustees, do we want to have? Thank you. We have the motion on screen, trustees. Do we want to have a question time, debate time, or we'll go to the vote directly? I see no comments, so I'll call the vote on the motion in front of us. Uh, I'll read the motion again. Resolve that the Halton Catholicistic School Board accept the recommendations of the policy committee that the amendment to the HCD, HDSB procedural bylaw. Article four point one point two be approved, provided that this amendment shall not go into effect until January one twenty twenty five. Trustee Ohan Chanara.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew.
Favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Sanders.
Favor.
Trustee Philbert.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension, motion carries. Thank you, trustees. We shall now move on to next order of business is staff reports. We have no staff reports. Uh, next item is information items. Uh, item eleven point one, Director's Report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. Director's Report has kind of a wide array of topics covering the pillars of our MYSP, of course. Under Achieving Pathways update and believing the October eleventh PA Day, which just passed. Few days ago. Your belonging, like to speak about the Halton Catholic Children's Foundation, HCCF. And then, uh, just another update with one of our new schools, God bless you, and that's Saint Cecilia. Uh, Pathways program is a program that's been in place in Ontario schools for nearly. Fifteen years, sixteen years. And what it really tries to focus on again is even elementary. To have supports and discernment. Uh, for students and staff as well, to support students into their. Hold your applause, pathways in life. And we have student success teachers that help support that. Of course, we have. Uh, class, classroom teachers and all sorts of other staff that support that. Uh, and just again, a few updates, just to maybe dazzle you with the array of things that go on in this board. And, and again, there could be more, uh, but we're, we want to highlight, for instance, that we've had more than fifty students taking dual credit courses. With either Sheridan or Mohawk College. And they're earning their both, uh, college and high school credits concurrently. And of course, uh, there's, there's other benefits to then experiencing college for students who would be there full time soon enough. This month, grade eight students and their parents, guardians will have opportunities and over the weeks. After that to attend information sessions aimed at preparing them for the transition to secondary school. And indeed, the conversation around that begins in schools and hopefully within families as well, much, much earlier than that. Uh, we have partnership with Hamilton, with many partnerships in the region. But one we just want to highlight is everything has an acronym HAND, which is Hamilton District Heavy Construction Association. Uh, don't try and break that down into how it got to hand. I've tried. To provide construction specific experiential learning opportunities for students. And of course, there's no end of possibilities in terms of that, that work. There's a premier event coming up next week. Three new specialist high skills majors, sometimes called CHISM or SHSM. Again, a, a characteristic and a feature of secondary schools throughout the province of Ontario. Uh, begin this fall, which means that we now have fifty-three, uh, SHSMs in nine of our secondary schools. And in the months to come, our Pathways team will survey students to gauge interest and variations on that. And we're very proud, we're of our new relationship with the Royal Canadian Navy. Which provides opportunities for students to participate in paid co-op program with guaranteed summer employment as well. We'll be sending nearly eight hundred students, uh, to the province of Ontario's Level Up Career Fair in November. And that's really not that far since it's in the GTA. The Ontario Youth Apprentice Program, so we know what apprenticeships are, OYAP. Uh, concluded the past year with a four hundred percent increase in OYAP participants. Over two years, as well as a three hundred percent increase in OYAP participants who signed registered training agreements, beginning their official apprenticeship. While in secondary school. If you get the opportunity to go to any of these events, it is. Mind boggling, the size and of, of the, and scope of the activities and the possibilities in terms of, of careers. Um, not only traditional ones that have changed dramatically, uh, but ones that are new and, uh, emerging. Professional Activity Day. Tradition here at Halton Catholic and many, if not most, or all Catholic boards in the province is to dedicate. Uh, one of their professional activity days to. Who, I guess. Trying to, uh, develop and reignite the, the flames of faith amongst our, our staff. Um, teaching and educating Catholic schools is a, a blessing and a great honor. Uh, it's also very difficult. It's very difficult also to have the added blessing and honor of instilling the faith and growing the faith. Uh, with our, uh, of our, our students. And that means that all of us, uh, need to ensure that we're. Taking the opportunities to discern, to engage in prayer, to engage in, uh, learning around, uh, our faith. And, um, this, of course, connects to, uh, everything we do from each of our schools and sites. And the last Friday was the day when that was, uh, there was dedication for that. Central staff created. When I was sort of doing my quick count, well, it's nearly a hundred and twenty, so over a hundred. Um, resources were created through a central site that, uh, schools could avail themselves of as they. They then planned their own day. So we had that nice balance of some central resources and support with the, like, the honoring and the respecting, the celebrating of the diversity of each of our, of our. Uh, communities, our learning communities. The CEC staff, uh, were at Saint Patrick Parish in the, in, in the hall there on a beautiful day of Friday. And we, uh, celebrated Mass, uh, with Father Joseph de Vivero CR. And Father Joseph also led us through, uh, a lot of, uh, study of scripture, in particular, looking at, uh, digging into, um. Our theological theme, particularly around the area of kindness. And of course, uh, other virtues that connect to that, not least of which is, is courage. We had staff here too that led, uh, activities as well. It was a beautiful day. I would hope and expect that the HCCF is not a, a new word or term to anybody here. Uh, and it's only been around about twelve years and its impact has been monumental. Uh, I assume that it had been around a lot longer, but, but only twelve years. And part of that, of course, was through the. Uh, the difficult, uh, two years or so of, of COVID. So for, for a long time, it's supported countless children in Halton region in so many different ways. Could be providing food. It could be getting clothing, boots in the winter or hats. To access opportunities as well that, uh, students might not be able to, to attain. Whether it's sports, whether it's other activities. They continue to bring light into the darkness in many lives. And if you've, uh, gone on their website, or if you've heard some of the testimonies at a bishop's banquet or a bishop's dinner, or. Uh, you, you'll, you'll know that, um, these are heartwarming, to say the least, and touching. Uh, major fundraisers for, uh, the HCCF, of course, we would all know is the Twenty Four Hour Fast, the Charity Golf Classic. Which is this July the ninth was the past one. And HCC, and, and then the Evening with Bishop Crosby, which is November the fourteenth. Tickets are on sale online and. Buy early and buy often for those. Because it is a wonderful event and food's always good and the, and the, uh, the fellowship as well. Just to let you know, over this, uh, past fiscal year, they dispersed, the foundation dispersed. Uh, a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to seven hundred and forty-four students, uh, in our board who were in need. Hundred percent of the schools supporting, supported, uh, so all our schools somehow got some support of students in them. They ranged from a hundred dollars to all the way up to thirteen thousand dollars. The HCCF, uh, provided eleven thousand or over eleven thousand to Ukrainian refugee families in collaboration with the Welcome Center. And some of those, uh, women have given testimony to the impact of them and their, and their, um, and their children. Uh, on occasions like, uh, the bishop's dinner. We have graduate, uh, award bursaries, so if you go to any of our graduations, you'll see that obviously there's lots of awards. But one of them is an award from the HCCF. And since twenty twenty-one, uh, they've awarded sixty secondary school bursaries. I'll be awarding another thirty-three per school this year for a total of forty-five thousand dollars to ninety of our graduates. A great way to, uh, uh, end your career here at, uh, Halton and, uh, as you move on to, um. Your next section of your, uh, pathway. And we've introduced, uh, elementary school graduate bursaries as well. Finally, Saint Cecilia. Uh, patron saint of music, uh, and other things. Uh, we have a school, of course, named that, one of our new schools. Feast Day is November the twenty-second, um, and the parish is, uh, Saint Benedict. Four hundred five students, I think more than that now, since we wrote that down. Sonia Snyder is principal, Nancy Denalfo is superintendent. And trustee Saunders, uh, keeps an eye on that school as well. Uh, around forty-one staff members and the mascot is the cardinal. Happy to entertain any questions?
Thank you, Director Klein, for your, uh, presentation on your report. Uh, trustees, please, uh, put your hand up if you'd like questions. First up is Vice Chair Agnew. You have the floor.
Thank you, uh, and through you, Mr. Chair. So I just have a question about the Halton, um, Children's. Foundation, and I understand that they do, um, fundraising in a variety of different ways, or they're multi-pronged in how they collect funds. But the question that I do have is that I know that a number of school councils are encouraged to purchase a table for the bishop's dinner. Um, and I guess what I'm curious about is. Um, so s- schools would purchase the table and then that would help fund. The fund, but then those schools have to turn around and apply. For funds to potentially help someone in their school. So wouldn't? The schools be better off to place those particular funds that would otherwise be directed towards the bishop's dinner into? A fund at their schools that they could then, because I know that principals often will know which families need to be helped out. And then leave the fundraising initiative for things like the bishop's dinner, et cetera, to outside. Um, donors, just something I'm just curious, because it feels like. It just feels awkward to me, like I'm giving out a thousand dollars to go to a dinner, but then I'm going to apply for my students. To get help and they may not get help if the funds are gone at that point. So could somebody assist me with trying to figure that out?
Uh, boss is on Director Klein and.
I can certainly start. Um. I was at another board that had a foundation similar to this, just the letters were different. And it had been around a long time as well. And that was something that was, uh, also, uh. Uh, don't tell anybody, but there's other bishop's dinners at other boards too. So the, uh, bishop's dinner there was also something that schools would, uh, buy tickets for. And people would be encouraged to do that. I think part of it is, uh, an opportunity to, to model as not only for staff, but for. The school community as well. The fact that sometimes we do have to put into things. And then by doing so, there's, uh, more or less a synergy that can occur because. The more people that show up for these things, the more money that's raised overall. So I guess it's sort of that whole is greater than the sum of its parts. Um, that, that would be my thought on it. I'm not sure if any of the trustees or any of the superintendents or superintendent, uh, law offices, anything to say, but that would be my understanding of it. And then, uh, there are occasions and you might have to. Uh, ask, or you might be the recipient of some of that, but then what's, um, accrued and what's been generated might be, uh, larger than would have been if, if we hadn't done so.
Uh, boss is, uh, to Supran Denskovic.
I, I don't really have much more to add, other than I kind of reiterate with, uh, Director Klein has mentioned, trustee Agnew. Um, sometimes it is better, the, kind of like some of the parts, right? I think, uh, that's what Director Klein mentioned, and it is true. So money is being contributed globally. To help maybe certain schools that might not have the opportunity to, don't have the same SGF that maybe. Another school will have a larger population at.
Thank you.
Follow up. So I certainly understand that. Just trying to understand that piece, because I, I do know that there's a big percentage of the funds that are raised that do go to operational. Um, so I just was curious, like I just, you know, again, I totally agree with the principal behind, uh, and you know, a lot of the councils enjoy the evening out. Um, but it just, it seemed a little bit counterproductive that we would. Spend those funds when there's, we may need those funds internally in our school. So I just was curious how that worked, because again, if you give out those funds and then. You have a family that comes to you and you have to apply to the foundation for a grant, it may not be available if the funds aren't available. But, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, trustee Sanders, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, Superintendent, Director Klein. I'm just wondering, the, the, uh, the, um, program you mentioned with the Navy, is that part of the Naval Experience Program and, and, and are the, are the children able to then? Um, go into the one-year program after that? I don't know if, how much you know about it and, uh. And the reason I'm asking is that one of my kids is in, in, is taking advantage of this program that's currently in the Naval Experience Program. And, uh, uh, so just any, any details on that?
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Sanders, Director Klein.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, uh, trustee Sanders, uh, for that. Uh, I'm not, I'm really not, uh, able to answer that question clearly. I'll take a look at Superintendent, uh, Del Sardo to see if he would answer.
Thank you. And through you.
Go ahead, Supran Denskovic.
Trustee Sanders, uh, right now what we're looking at is a co-op placement to get into the Navy that could lead to what you're saying too, if the Navy, if the Navy. If the co-op placement affords it. Right now, what we're trying to do is, um, support the Navy with a career. And for students that are interested in a career in the Navy as well. And that's why it also leads to paid. Summer, uh, summer employment as well. So it does lead into a career with the Navy.
Thank you. Trustee Sanders, follow up?
Quick, uh, second question, uh, um, Director Klein, I think it's Mary, Mother of God, is Saint Cecilia.
Trustee Sanders, uh, yeah, we can take school names, please.
No, 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 I think, you know, you're pointing out one of my, uh, heirs. I always add one there, so you're gonna, I've got a prize that I'll give you for finding that. Thank you.
I was talking to the priest this week. He was excited about the schools.
Thank you. Trustee Sanders, uh, up next, trustee Ohan Chanara.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Uh, just a very quick question through you, Mr. Chair to Director Klein. Um, as I continue to get information in my areas in regards to French immersion program and, and some of the challenges that we've had as a board. Is there any update that we can convey to our, to our folks in, uh, Halton Hills?
Uh, Director Klein.
Oops, hold on, let me put this on. I'm gonna look over at some of our, our superintendents here to see in terms of an, uh, update. I know, I don't think there's been, uh. Since it's been just over a, a week or ten days, I'm not sure. In terms specifically trustee, uh, Ohan Chanara, about French or in general?
Uh, the information I'm getting would be French, uh, Director Klein, French immersion, particularly how we make it out.
I'll just turn to staff and see if we have any update on that, either Superintendent Cordero or Superintendent Oldman. We will start with HR.
Uh, Supran Norman.
Through you, Chair. Um, in terms of updates that I can share, is there are a number of candidates that we're waiting on, not certainly the amount of candidates that we would require to staff all of our, um, French vacancies. Those are the remaining vacancies that remain unfilled, but of those that do, we are waiting on a number of. Criminal reference checks with vulnerable sector screen, which is a requirement through policy for us to be able to have that in hand prior to obviously allowing anyone to work. Um, given the population and student demographic we'd be, um, supporting. So we are in a wait and hold pattern on that. Um, some that came, we've been requesting of, of the various police departments, um, since September. So we are in a wait and hold. We were told it could be thirty to thirty-five. Um, working days, so we are well into that at this point. Um, so as soon as we have those, those will be deployed into our schools, um, as quickly as, as, as we reasonably can.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just taking a, trying to stare at Superintendent Cordero. I'm not sure. Is there anything else you'd want to add, Superintendent?
No, no, no further additions.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanara, uh, any, uh, follow-up question?
No, thank you very much, Superintendent Oldman. I know it's challenging. It just, sometimes it's nice to hear that it's moving in the right direction, albeit some roadblocks and some patiently, patiently waiting. But, uh, thank you for the update.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. Up next is trustee Powell. Trustee Powell, you have the floor.
I'm gonna just, um, switch.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just regarding that police check that you were mentioning, wouldn't, um. Wouldn't the teachers already have?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just regarding that police check that you were mentioning, wouldn't wouldn't the teachers already have that ready if they were applying for the job? Isn't that something that's done on someone's resume all the, ready to go all the time?
Superintendent Norman.
Through you, Chair. Thank you, Trustee Carabella. It would certainly be the case for individuals, and and I think we had shared in the past that, given the mobility that's opened up in the current market with some of the language centrally, that certainly would be the case if someone's employed by another board. However, our policy would require that that police check is done within a period that that would put them outside of that. So they're probably in the state of, if they're working for another board, having completed that within their board's respective policy, and then completing annual offense declarations, which is a practice we also undertake. The challenge is, if someone's been with a board for ten years or so, that police check is is ten years old. Yeah, if that helps.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, follow up? No? Okay, we shall now move on to Trustee Powell.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I have a question just actually in follow-up to Trustee Agnew's about the director, just regarding the Bishop's Dinner. Do we actually, who pays for that organization? Is it a separate organization from our board?
Director Klein, I can add to that later.
Superintendent Loft.
Superintendent Loft, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Powell, it is a separate organization from the board, yes. So there has been some in the past, I know we used to sometimes do the the books for the the charity. That has now been outsourced, so that's no longer being done by board staff. There has been some time donated with respect to some marketing and such that has been done in the past, as well as some of the space that's used. We utilize maybe some of the space within our board. But on the whole, it is an arms-length organization from, from the board, from, I keep saying board, from our board, HTDSB. So they're a separate organization with their own board directors and 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 executive director and such. So they are separate from us.
Go ahead. Yes, sure.
Sorry, I didn't want to point into this, but how much, do we know how much every dollar goes right back into the funds, like to the students in our board?
Superintendent Loft? Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't prepared to answer, yeah, those type of questions tonight. I know it has been, it's been worked on in the past number of years to get that up, right? Corporate donations, working on the corporate side of it, that's that's where where I see the the potential is with it. We do, they do do a lot of with with our our system. Like you saw, the twenty-four-hour fast being one of the the big or larger money earners or revenue earners for the charity. But then they also have the golf tournament, which Director Klein mentioned was in the summer, as well the Bishop's Dinner, which is two of the big, the large scale items that were, a lot of the revenue comes for the charity. There's one full-time employee with the with the charity, and that's pretty much, majority of the overhead is is that, with the exception of the cost to do the books and the auditing fees. Couple incidentals here, insurance and stuff, some smaller type items. But on the whole, that is is the largest expenditure. Now, I would say there's one thing I did mention is the, I forgot to mention before, is all the, the funds that go out do go to students of our board. So it is, it is our student. So I know I said arms-length, it is arms-length from a managing perspective, but the only benefactor is students of our board, families of students of our board.
Thank you. You have a clarification, questions? Okay, come back. You're okay. Up next is Vice Chair Agnew.
Thank you. So that was my question. So we're the only board that benefits from the fundraising? Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, any, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Thank you. Trustees, any further questions for Director Klein? If not, thank you, Director Klein, for presenting your report on on what's happening in our system. Thank you. Up next, item eleven point two, construction report. Superintendent Mary, could you please present your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the construction report for October. The pictures are in your package, and the the two schools that we have updates on for tonight are Saint Ceteri. So you can see from the photos there, the top left, our turf field is complete now with the the naming and the logos on there as well. That's fantastic. Also, the top right shows the diffused light panels, the cow wall panels, which we were waiting on anxiously all summer, finally arrived. That one you see there in the photo was in the chapel, but they're also going in the gym as well. So we're working away on that. And the cafeteria, you'll see a photo of that as well there, is nearly complete. I hope to have that up and running probably into the later part of next week. And then up next on the on the docket for this project, the wood flooring. Now that we have the 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 diffuse light panels and the gym enclosed, we can work on the wood flooring for the gym. And there's also some wood flooring to go in the theater as well. And then obviously some landscaping work outside to be done as well. And then just wrapping up things on the classroom wing, some plumbing fixtures and lighting and ceiling tiles in the remaining little part of the classroom wing over by the gymnasium as well. So that's it for Saint Ceteri. And then next up, we have Saint Josephine Paquita. This one here, most of the interior is all complete, but you can see a photo there in the top right or bottom right, sorry, the library. The flooring complete there now, and millwork is in, so that's ready for, ready for use there. And then we also have the landscaping ongoing outside. The natural playgrounds are nearing completion, and then we have some plating work and then some other kind of general landscaping going on outside. So wrapping up there in the next few weeks, just finishing the landscaping and then working on the deficiencies that we have through the the rest of the project. And happy to take any questions that trustees may have on those two projects.
Thank you, Superintendent Mary. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Mary? Saying none, thank you, Superintendent Mary. I just have a quick question. What was the build time for Saint Ceteri and what's the typical build time in the province?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Well, from when we started construction, it would have been in January twenty twenty-three, and we got to occupancy in September in twenty months. Typical would probably be around thirty-six months, so we took a little less than half off the schedule. Granted, there are sections that aren't done yet, but we're working away on those, and it was pretty, pretty great achievement for the team, and they're pretty proud of what they did over a very tight timeline.
Thank you, Superintendent Mary. Awesome work there. We look forward to visiting the school sometime. Thank you. We shall now move on to item eleven point three, HTSB Math Achievement Plan. Superintendent Squibb, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Every year, we have a mandate to present a mathematics achievement action plan in concert in keeping with the provincial mathematics achievement action plan. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here before you today, because of that plan. This year, we've taken a little bit of a different tack in that we have a brand-new strategic plan. So unlike last year, where we kind of measured it based on provincial, although provincial guidelines alone, this year, we're looking more carefully at the achieving section of our strategic plan. But I'm going to say here that that doesn't mean that the other three do not fit into the mathematics. We definitely have all three in these areas to talk about, just by way of measuring for the ease of reporting. For Director Klein, we're focusing in on the achievement part for our mathematics plan. So this is, these are the three areas that the province has asked us to look at every year. I've kind of simplified it in its language, where the first one is all about curriculum and ministry policy. The second one talks about content knowledge for teaching, so the content of mathematics. And the third one is all about the student. So curriculum, content, student are the three main goals of the province that they want us to turn our attention to. So what we did was combine these two areas, these with our strategic plan to then present this new mathematics achievement action plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. The team has shrunk a little bit since last year. So you have myself and Andrea Turquette, our curriculum consultant, K-12 in mathematics. In elementary, we have Andrea Mendoza, who comes over to us from special education as an intervention teacher in the area of mathematics. And Chris Van Will rejoins the team as the intermediate specialist itinerant. And then we have one secondary person working at one of our priority schools, and that's Lisa O'Hara. So I'll talk a little bit more about priority schools in a little bit, but with the team moving down a little bit, we chose to move towards prioritizing schools with some results that we wanted to focus on. That doesn't necessarily mean always that these schools had low EQAO results, but they had a significant amount of demographics that we were looking for to turn them into a priority school. So this is where our itinerants will be working primarily out of this year. So our first area is resources. We'll be focusing quite a bit on the resources that the board provides for teachers to use in delivering mathematics. Our two main resources are textbooks, if you will, are Math Up and Mathology. Just want to remind everybody that at this time, there are no paper textbooks for us to be able to give into the hands of students. So we are at the mercy of the publishers that, you know, the province vets and creates a list and says, here's a list of resources you can choose to use that we approve of, and Math Up and Mathology fall under that domain. So those are our two core resources. And then we also have supplementary resources that include Knowledge Hook and TVO Learn. So what we did with these resources this year, last year, we revised our grade seven and eight scope and sequence. So that's kind of like the guide we give teachers. Every year, teachers would have to otherwise submit a long-range plan for the board. What we do, though, is then we give them a sample and say, here, you can use this. So this is what we ask them to use. So for grades three to six, we revised them this year, taking a look at a variety of different factors up to and including the use of our resources and trying to grandfather, change some of the older resources that were included that are no longer in use in our board. So our focus was to provide easy access for staff to find the materials they need to teach. We also enhanced it with lesson plans that are very easy to use in a combined grade situation. So in the digital tools, Knowledge Hook is now part of the instructional practice in our board. This comes to us, and the reason why we're investing in this is the ministry's provided us funding specifically for a tool like Knowledge Hook. So you might remember, I've heard the language from Superintendent Loft about REP, responsive education programs grants. This is where we're getting the source of funding for this, so it's envelope money that the province has directed us to say, we want you to spend money on a tool just like this. And they gave us a list of them. This meets the criteria, therefore, we're using Knowledge Hook. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to spend it. So it it's a component of the professional learning cycle that we want to use. The data that we collect from kids using this, students using this in the classroom, will inform the classroom teacher where there might be specific learning needs in an area of mathematics. So that includes if the student decides to take the work home and work with mom and dad or just do the work on their own. We could use the information that we gather from from the student and then say, okay, we need to focus on this. And this kind of forms a component of what we're asking schools to do this year in their student achievement plan. Now, the digital math tool that we're investing in and wishing all the best of luck to all the students out there, because tomorrow and Thursday, we'll actually be having our first Caribou Math Contest days in our schools. It's an international mathematics contest. It's produced through Brock University. We're able to use the digital math tool funding for this, which is why we're able to invest in this. Last year, we had over a thousand students participating each time. This year, our target is to have fifteen hundred students participate each year. We also actively encourage and love that other schools participate in University of Waterloo math contests as well, and they'll be happy to share our our progress in these areas in the months to come. I mentioned some of the things that the province wants us to do in terms of content and, or not content, sorry, and curriculum and policy. One area that is of particular focus this year is high-impact instructional practices in mathematics. If you're ever interested, you could download this document on at your leisure and read it over. There's quite a few strategies in there for schools and staff to use, including deliberate practice, direct instruction, small group instruction, tools or representations. So when we ask schools to make a student achievement plan goal this year, what we ask them to do is pick a content area and an area of high-impact math strategies to deliver it in. So it could sound something like, you know, what does deliberate practice look like in fractions? And for the record, deliberate practice could involve things like playing games. And yeah, you can have a lot of fun playing math games. At least I do. So part of the work that I do as a board math lead is to help schools identify content areas where students may have struggled. So I'll be meeting with principals this year on a regular basis, up to including one-on-one meetings with all principals to talk about where their, what their data is pointing to. We can take a look at some of the information they might have available themselves, and that includes EQAO data. What EQAO can do is help us really refine the strand that students struggled in compared to both the provincial average and where students were at if they achieved a level three or a four. So we can help students, we can help schools recognize that maybe they're struggling in an area of number sense. You take that data and then you combine it with, well, maybe we need to drill a little bit deeper. We can grab Knowledge Hook in the classroom, and then all of a sudden, you have that content focus that staff can focus on. The the curriculum of mathematics is quite vast, so you wouldn't be able to necessarily do all the professional development you need in all subject areas in mathematics within one year. So it's best to kind of focus on one area, and oftentimes, there's some combinations with other areas of mathematics that happens. We also provide tutoring supports for students in our board. We have specific envelope funding that comes to us from the ministry for this. And part of what they have asked us to do is to identify specifically equity-deserving groups who may have had disproportionate outcomes. And that also mean, and also looking for a third-party provider. So combined in those two things, we have partnered up with Hall and Black Voices for the first semester to work with students in grade nine. And then the second semester, we'll be looking to partner up with what we did last year with Learn Style. I may have mentioned, that was a particularly moving review I saw after we did the work, because what we focus on were students with autism and providing them coding interventions, because coding is part of the mathematics curriculum, so students were able to enter into the curriculum that way. Then some students who may not normally have been able to enter into the curriculum in a way that was meaningful to them. So we will be starting up that tutoring in about two weeks. We're actively looking for the students right now through the schools after progress reports have been identified. So we'll be getting some information to feed it to our partnering agencies. And then in terms of math interventions, we'll continue to be doing math interventions in the schools. Our special education team is phenomenal at this. I would argue, probably one of the best in the board, and I'm not just paid to say that. The Do the Math Initiative has had tremendous success, I would say, based on the data that we've received, and we're going to continue that. Not only will we be offering that in our priority schools, but we'll also make sure that that continues in the schools right now. And I know that Andrea Mendoza was part of that work last year, and she'll continue to do that this year in support. But there's also other supports within student, special education to help teach, special education teachers with this. We're also hoping to introduce that program into classroom teachers' hands to kind of see that they too have that ability to introduce this as a small group intervention. Now, when I mentioned priority schools, we have four elementary priority schools and one secondary. And when we talk about a priority school, we're, we're actually talking about grades one through eight. So the four schools that we've identified and the one secondary school that we identified receive intensive support from our itinerants. They'll at least be there once a week in each school, and I've kind of modeled out what that looks like. So in September and October, they're doing quite a bit of data collection to help the teams identify where students are struggling within the curriculum. And then we are also partnering up again with Carlton University within the area of numeracy screeners. So this is, we're now at a really interesting phase, because the numeracy screeners that have been created are now being digitized by the very same people that have introduced EQAO to us as a digital form veretta. So right now, we're helping norm these, norm the numeracy screeners, and we'll be providing feedback to schools based on the data that we receive. Right around in the next month, we'll be looking at intervention and staff learning. So we'll be doing a combination of doing the intervention work within the school with students who've been struggling, but also doing intensive learning with teachers to help them understand, okay, this area of curriculum we identified as a struggle for your students, how about we do some professional learning in that area? Then we'll continue that into December with the intervention work. In January, while teachers are kind of focused on writing report cards and consolidating the learning for students, there'll be classroom supports available with high-impact math strategies as the focus. And we'll repeat the process, I don't want to go over it again, but we'll repeat the process from February to April all over again, start a brand-new cycle at the, in the same schools. All this leads us into May, where the intervention and EQAO support will happen for the schools as students become, get ready for writing EQAO for grade three and six mathematics. I'm looking forward to sharing the data with the schools there. I know that the team is eager to work in these schools on a daily basis. And I know the principals have been quite eager and happy to have us in their schools, working with the teams. And that would be. And that would be, Mr. Chair, our, the math plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thank you Superintendent Skripak for presenting the math achievement plan. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Skripak? Trustee Saunders, you have the floor.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So could you just explain the high-impact math again? Is it, is it integrated into the regular teaching? Is it a separate classroom? Or how do we, how do we roll that out?
Superintendent Skripak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Trustee Saunders. That is a book that's probably has about, I would think about ten strategies teachers could use in a classroom that evidence suggests that the ministry's collected, and that evidence suggests has a tremendous impact on student learning. So one example could be direct instruction. We know through the evidence and the research that direct instruction has a great impact and tremendous impact on student learning. And so direct instruction isn't what we might think it might sound like, you know, I'm just telling you what to do and do it. It follows a rhythm, something like, you know, I do. So the teacher models something for the students, then the whole class does it. That's the we-do moment. And then the final part is the you-do. So if I was teaching you how to do something, I might say, okay, let's talk about what three times five looks like. I'd model it for you. Then I'd ask you to do it together as a group, as a class. We'll talk it over, talk about any misconceptions. And then when we're finished, we, we kept, we finished with a moment of practice for the student to do on their own. This has to work together very much with strong learning goals and success criteria and other high-impact strategies.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, follow-up? Any other trustees, questions, comments for Superintendent Skripak? Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to ask you the process for finding the students who need tutoring. So does each school, like, do they have like a minimum, maximum? Or, and are they looking at like all their student population with a lower, lower grade? And what happens to those that aren't part of the government funding and they need help? How are they given help?
Superintendent Skripak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Trustee Carabella. This is just one of the supports we're providing. So we have a number of different interventions happening within our school board. I know the Thomas Merton Center offers summer school and summer intervention program for students. Some of our schools have offered intervention programs in the summertime for students. What this is specifically targeting, we've asked each high school to identify, we only have enough funding for about fifty students for this semester. Yeah, for the whole school board. It's about three years ago, we had quite a bit of money provided through the government for COVID, through COVID funding for tutoring. But that money is no longer in existence. I can kind of share with you where the budget sits there in that line item. What we did get funding for was enough for fifty students this semester, fifty next semester. In secondary, grade nine specifically, that's who we're targeting through the data. But then we're also looking at also supporting our elementary schools in second semester. So with the, with the amount of money we have, we try to make it, stretch it out. So it's right now, three students per school that would receive in secondary this semester.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, follow?
No, thank you very much.
Up next is Trustee Filbert.
Yeah, I just had a comment in regards to the tutoring. I'm not sure how the financial side works, but I know that a lot of high schools also have peer tutoring. So in my school, if you feel you're proficient enough in, like, if you're a grade twelve student or a grade eleven student, you feel comfortable with grade nine and ten. There's a lot of different ways that you can contact a teacher or representative at your school. So you can not only get hours for tutoring, but also students who need it, but not necessarily fit the criteria. Or if it's capped at fifty, they have other options as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If I could just piggyback on that.
Yes.
I do not want to take away from the great work the staff do, because there are countless days that I can tell you, and countless hours of teachers who will take time after hours or in between on lunch sessions to work with students too. So they're never really left on, on their own. If they are looking for help, they will find it.
Thank you. Trustees, any further questions for Superintendent Skripak? If not, thank you Superintendent Skripak and your team for the wonderful work you do with the limited resources that we have. So keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Shall now move on to item eleven point four, responses to questions from delegation and open question period concerns raised regarding school start times. Director Klein, please present a report.
Thank you, Chair. So you have the report before you. Report is a response to some questions that we had. Might seem a very long time ago, but in June, there was a series of questions that came in regarding a couple of our high schools and the shift in start times. Of course, start times change. That means conclusion times change. And trustees at that point had a, a motion that was unanimously carried to, to allow us to put this into a, a, a report that would address all of those in one pass. So within that report, what we've done is highlighted the edges of the, of the, the grounds that we work within when we're making these decisions. The constraints that are within the Ed Act, the constraints that are within budget, and constraints that are within the reality of school boards working together in consortium with regard to transportation that, that affect this and impact this. So be happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, do we have questions for, for Director Klein? Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate the answers to the, it's more the general thing. And when I was going through the questions, there's just one here that I wanted to just get a bit of clarification on. It's number four. I know our schools have started, but I'm just wondering if for mental health reasons, if any students are given accommodation that they come forward, or do we know, do we keep data on that?
Can we see the question on screen, please? Director Klein or Superintendent Loft? Director Klein?
Sorry, it's, should I read it?
Yeah, I got it. I've, I've, I've got it. Accommodations in education mean a lot of different things. So I'll interpret it in the sense of the, the judicious parent role that schools take when they accommodate students. And that was part of what we talked about in the response was, you've heard this often from Superintendent Jack Caldera and some of her other colleagues, we have a tiered approach to how we support students. So if there are students who are experiencing any forms of, I'll use the non-clinical term anxiety, just the layman's term anxiety, or headwinds, as they often use when I'm describing challenges or difficulties. There is a, again, a tiered approach how you, we would support those. Supports within the classrooms themselves to supports that we would have, or we could through youth care workers or social workers to the final end, where there might be extensions where students and parents could be supported by connections to community. Whatever the, I guess, those can differ in range to a certain extent, if that's what you mean by accommodations regarding that, which might be more at the start of the school year than it would be as the school year unfolds.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, follow-up?
So a follow-up would be, so we're not aware of any accommodations that are happening? Or is that something that comes to you, or just it gets dealt with at the school? Or is that part of the data that's collected?
Director Klein?
I don't think we'd have any data that would connect any supports that we're giving to students that directly correlates with a shift in times of, of it. We wouldn't have data on that. Often where there's supports, students, particularly as you would have more intensive, let's say, support for them, those would often be within, again, clinical records that wouldn't be shared with a great frequency.
Thank you. Up next, Trustee Saunders?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Director Klein, I received a number of emails to saying that as we started rolling out these earlier dates, we're having issues with buses arriving and departure times. And just wanted you to give us an update if that's been, that's sort of hammered out and are we, are we a little better on that?
I'll turn to my comrade here, who's the busman.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Saunders. Yeah, at the start of the year, there were, as all boards in the province had issues with transportation. Startup, things changing. We still have some delays still. You're going to see, we're not going to say it's going to be perfect. It's not. But it has definitely calmed down. I'm sure you haven't received the same number of emails you did at the start of the year. So, Trustee Saunders, we really have been working at it, and it's been dropping, fortunately.
Thank you. We do not have any other hands up, so thank you, Director Klein, for presenting this report. Our next order of business is miscellaneous information. Twelve point one, student trustee update. Trustee Filbert, would you do the honors?
Yeah, so we're just a month and a bit into school. So myself and the other student trustees, who unfortunately aren't here today, but we're really happy to share the different things going on in student life and how that connects to the MYSP. In regards to achieving, we focus specifically on the cell phone ban in classrooms. As we mentioned in September and after we spoke with our senators at our first general meeting, we noticed that a lot of students feel that the ban is positively impacting their learning conditions. That they've been able to focus more. Teachers, I've heard in my school and other schools, have noticed that there's a lot more conversation going on. Students are more engaged and they're kind of building healthier habits. However, on the same side of the coin, some of our senators expressed that they feel they're losing the opportunity to self-regulate the use of their phone in educational environments. So when we discussed that as a senate, some students brought forth concerns that they're not being necessarily taught how to use their phone. Instead, they're just being told to put it away. So we asked them to monitor that within their schools. We said, it was pretty early and we were happy to hear the feedback from them. We're hoping that alongside the ban, teachers are, are not necessarily teachers, but students in general in their community are learning about why their phones are told to be put away. Additionally, students voiced opinions on the limitations of social media on the H G D S B Wi-Fi. Originally, senators had an issue with YouTube, but we understand that that has now been changed for students and staff, which students expressed they really appreciate. Just one other issue they had was in regards to Instagram. I know a lot of schools, including my own, provide announcement updates for clubs, if they're hosting meetings, general information is used on Instagram. So we're looking into if there's a way as a senate that we can help change that it's used on Instagram, or if that Instagram is necessary to each schools, if that's something that we then bring up to trustees here. But yeah, in general, for achieving with the cell phone ban, we've seen a lot of improvement, and we're happy that students are sharing a lot of their opinion on it. I know a lot of the time in September is just kind of general angst around it, but we're happy that there's been some growth. In regards to believing, one opportunity for students within the H G D S B that we'd like to highlight is the Oxta Catholic Education Week Short Video Contest. This year, the theme is Pilgrims of Hope. Last year, as a senate, we created a video and with the theme, We Are Called to Love, and we actually came pretty close in the finals. So we're really happy to have our theme this year, and we're hoping to get started on that as soon as possible. And that all H G D S B students, even outside of our senate, who want to be a part of this initiative, are encouraged to submit by the deadline of November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, so that they can showcase the wonderful opportunities and ways to develop Catholic faith within our schools. In terms of belonging, recently in September, we, as a board and as schools, as students, took part in actions toward commemorating and furthering truth and reconciliation. So through discussion, education, and reflection, we took one step further on our endless path of reconciliation, creating a shared purpose within our community. A lot of students at my school and others felt that it was very informative and that each year we continue to grow by participating in things like Orange Shirt Day. Similarly, in November, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so a lot of schools are planning on having, if not already had, a Pink Day game. So it's a pep rally, a buyout, a civvies day to wear pink in support of breast cancer awareness. Additionally, we have a lot of fall-themed, winter-themed food drives going on. So I know at Bishop Reading, there's canned goods. At some other schools, they're doing item drives, like for fall and winter, so hats, scarves, et cetera. So not only does this support members of our local community, but it allows for purpose-driven connection with each other that both educates and helps various groups within the H G D S B. And the last part is belonging. So I've mentioned it a couple of times already, but throughout the month of September and October, student trustees have been meeting with members of our student senate. We're happy to say that we've selected our grade nines at each of our schools. So our senate is completely full with eight representatives from all ten high schools. We've also explained to them that they can join a plethora of subcommittees to do work in their area of interest. So whether that be environmental stewardship, mental health and wellbeing, equity and inclusion. So there's a lot of different ways for students to get involved within senate and within their schools. We appreciate all of the student voice we hear from these meetings, and we're excited to start including more of these in our updates. And thank you to our subcommittee chairs, which were newly elected, for assembling their individual meetings and providing us with information for these updates. I'll take any questions if there is any, but yeah.
Thank you, Trustee Filbert, for presenting your student update. Very good presentation. Thank you so much. Trustees, do we have questions for student trustee Filbert? Okay, Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
I just wanted to ask a little bit about how you mentioned that many of the clubs use Instagram, and I've heard that too. I've heard even like, you know, students coming out of elementary school being told now, got to get Instagram, because all the clubs are gonna, you know. And I'm just, you know, in the interest of, you know, equity, because not every child has access to social media. There's some students who aren't allowed to use social media. Or have you, did you discuss any other ways that you can share the information with the students so that more people can have access to it?
Trustee Filbert?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Yeah, so this has kind of been a topic within our senate for the past couple of years. It's kind of hard for me to speak on behalf of some of other school clubs, but I know that through senate and through, like, I'm the chair of DECA, so we, we post a lot on Instagram, but we also include email updates for students that may not have Instagram. We also use Teams as a form of communication, but we know that that's kind of hard to do for every single club in the school. So we haven't necessarily spoken as a community about ways to change that, especially because Instagram is so widely used. But it is something that, because it's now banned, that a lot of students are looking for solutions. So we'll hopefully have a feasible option for those that do not have access to Instagram.
And just as a follow-up, when you, yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. When you say banned, Instagram's not banned, because, you know, students have data on their phone. So in between classes, they can still access it, right? It's just more of an issue of those students who don't have it on their phone at all, I suppose, really.
Yeah, I think, I would say also, in terms of equity for students that don't have data, we would look for a more solution for that allows students to still use Instagram, but for those that either don't have it, they don't have access to data, or, for example, they can't bring a device to school where they could log in for Instagram, to kind of create other options for them. So while it is unavailable on the school Wi-Fi, that was the main reason that this was brought to our attention as student trustees and other forms of student leadership, but we're hoping to come up with some more options for students, so that Instagram isn't the only way like it is right now. Thank you, thank you.
Up next, Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I have a question for you. Thank you. So you mentioned that the YouTube is, is a platform you can use now. So can you tell, can you explain what, what happened, what it was, and now what it is? Thank you.
Trustee Filbert?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Chair. Yeah, so originally YouTube was part of the social media that was banned. Or I wouldn't say banned, but blocked on the school Wi-Fi. So not only for students to access YouTube for educational purposes, but it was also teachers who didn't have access to YouTube without submitting a request to I T and then having that approved. So in a lot of D two L platforms or Google Classroom platforms, where I know for classes like history or maybe politics, where it's part of an assignment to watch things on YouTube, it was definitely harder to do. So a lot of students, and I'm sure teachers have voiced that concern, which allowed it to be kind of overturned. So YouTube is available for all students and staff now.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, follow?
Thank you. No.
I see no other hands up, so thank you, student trustee Filbert, for presenting your report. Thanks. With that, we shall now move on to item twelve point two, O C S T update. Trustee Ohan Chanada, do you have an update for trustees?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Very quickly, the only thing I want to announce is we've received an email about registration is open for the twenty twenty-five January conference in Toronto. So please take a look at that and see if you can attend. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustees, any questions regarding Oxta to trustee Ohan Chanada? Seeing none. Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada, for your update. We shall now move on to the next item is correspondence. Item number thirteen, there is no correspondence. Open question period. Director Klein, do we have any questions submitted today? Open question period, director Klein, do we have any questions submitted today? Seeing none, thank you. Item number fifteen, in camera, we do not have to go in camera. Resolution regarding absentees, we have student trustee McGuire, who's absent, as well as student trustee Yebor. May I have a motion to excuse student trustee Yebor and student trustee McGuire? Trustee Saunders? Second, thank you to trustee Carabella. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Student trustees are excused. With that, we shall now move on to our last order of business, which is adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Saunders moves. Looking for second, please. Trustee Carabella, seconds. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Trustee Powell, could you lead us in the closing prayer?
Thank you. Just have a prayer to read. And the author is unknown. Thanksgiving is a time of gratitude to God, our Creator and Provider, whose guidance and care go before us and whose love is with us forever. Thanksgiving is a time to reflect on the changes, to remember that we too grow and change from one season of life to another. Thanksgiving is a time of changing seasons, when leaves turn golden in autumn's wake and apples are crisp in the first chill breezes of fall. Let us remember the true meaning of Thanksgiving as we see the beauty of autumn. Let us acknowledge the many blessings which are ours. Let us think of our family and friends and let us give thanks in our hearts.
Thank you, trustee Powell. Thank you for a great meeting. Good night.